I didn't think it would interest, but I wanted to disclose that a relative of mine, Bill Mitchell, we've involved with one of the sales of this property.
But you didn't benefit directly?
Right.
Any planning board members have a problem with Mr. Now participating? Okay, great. Thank you. So, item number three, First Church is requesting rezoning of 3, 5, and 7 Park Streets. And we'll ask you, because we do have two planning board members, to sort of, two new planning board members, to sort of summarize from the last meeting.
Understood. And I was actually, I was going to ask for direction to that point, because on one hand, I don't want to be redundant, but on the other hand, I don't want to leave anyone wondering. So, my name's James Montleone, attorney representing First Church in its pending application. First Church has requested to change its, its contract zoning status that was designated by, was established by a prior owner in 2020, intended to convert it from a residential zone into a specialized contract zone tailored to allow that particular business owner to create a spa there, that ultimately never opened. Now, out of parallel track, the church during, or extended period of time, has been looking to identify ways to correct an issue with handicap access of the property. Currently, there is a, there's a handicap ramp in the front of the church that requires that vehicles can't pull up to, to drop people off. So instead, people have to, have to cross the curb, cross the grass area, essentially walk to, to reach the base of the ramp. Trying to address that problem, the church attempted to negotiate with the, at the end, I understand there was a request to the city to have a new curb cut that would allow cars to, to pull straight in, but given the, the nature of that busy, busy intersection, that wasn't possible. In reliance on that, an opportunity came up when the owner of this property that had imagined building a spa there decided to leave that, that line of work, and the church acquired that property, recognizing that created an opportunity to buy the handicap access that they, they saw. With the planning board's plan, and it wasn't until the past December, when they presented the application, provided for move one of the buildings that's giving the area the intent of new work, and that, that request was, was needed to be an impermissible modification of the contract zone. In other words, it was, it was ordered that First Church could not remove that building, it had to maintain that unusable residential, formerly residential building, instead of developing a property in a manner that was productive for its congregants and its purpose to comply with. Now, if I can just refer you to a picture of, this is, this is the zoning as it stands today. First Church is, is surrounded by, the property at issue is surrounded by residential D-zone properties. We're not, we're not asking to be treated uniquely or differently than any of these other properties. We're asking to be returned to the same zoning, to this residential D-zone, which is frankly the more restrictive of the two options in the neighborhood, to be able to facilitate the use of the property that is consistent with, really what congregants need for adequate access. I believe that the, at, at the past meeting, there were discussions regarding some of the, the concerns about federal law limitations regarding religious exercise. Those were outlined in detail in a letter to the city attorney, which I understand has been distributed to members. That said, certainly happy to answer some questions that may come up, and if I can, I'd also invite the board to hear from one of the congregants, just to, to share some, some personal perspective.
I have lots of questions, and I am...
Is your mic on?
Sorry. I have a mic, I have no microphones working at all, everybody.
Okay. Oh, okay.
This is not working. All right. Bottom line, I have a lot of questions. I was hoping to work this out, but I'm afraid to. So, I'm not going to ask those questions, and I'm going to recommend that we postpone any discussion until we have our own lawyer here. I read that letter that you sent, and the word that, that's jumped out at me was hostile. And, you know, I, I don't want to say anything that could be perceived as being hostile. So, for that reason, I'm going to recommend that we postpone discussion on this topic until our own lawyer's here. Thank you.
Is that a motion?
Perhaps some more discussion. I can make that a motion.
Okay.
Yes.
And is there a second on the motion?
I, oh, right. I, I apologize, I sounded a little bit hoarse. I, I recently got over cold, so I apologize. So, I guess, Scott, what, what I would, I guess, suggest is we let city council worry about that legal aspect, because all we're doing is making a recommendation. So, my point of view is, you know, whenever we're asked to make zoning changes, what we've been told previously by other attorneys for the city is that we need to make our recommendation based on the goals and policies in the comprehensive plan. So, I guess that would be my recommendation, and let city council take on the, the other legal discussion that was presented. Because I don't think it impacts our recommendation, so...
I can appreciate my colleague's position. I will say respectfully that as a practicing attorney and a former judge of the district court here in Maine, I did not find it allowed to be hostile. But you attempted to put things in perspective, if I may. If we take, and I've read your letter several times this time, and I've read the case letter and the brief several times, I have a very good understanding of, of the, the religious, was it RSL, what would they call it, Act?
They refer to it as Ralupa, as by that acronym.
I started right from the beginning. I didn't jump right to the statute, to the ordinance, I didn't. I wanted to take a look at what is it that the city is looking for, the comprehensive plan. And this is what I've come up with, if I may, if I'm going on and rambling, let me know, please, somebody. The city wishes to encourage and increase new residents and seeks to make the community attractive to a mix of persons, including young professionals, recent college graduates, and persons wishing to create and who bids attention. The goals are to plan for orderly growth, development throughout the community, attract more middle-class and upper-income persons, create a city that is a great place to live, work, play, and to grow. Let me, let's, let's be frank, let's, let's be welcoming, let's be engaging. And then, I'm asked to take a look at more of the comprehensive plan where we get into historic and cultural resources. The city contains many historic structures and interesting, interesting buildings and significant places which contribute to our character. One of them, I believe, is this church. It was founded in 1834. The pastor at the time was Samuel Smith, I believe, wrote our country to this day. He was also on the faculty college of Waterville at the time. I mentioned this about this church, which was established in 1834, because I believe at one time, there were probably 10 and 11 churches in the city. This one has withstood everything since 1834. We've lost Sacred Heart Church, we've lost St. Francis Church, and we've lost the, the, either the Methodist or the Congregational Church up, up Main Street. Let's not try and lose any more because of what we do. The losses of these other churches because of something that happened with the parishioners, not caused by the city. When this was changed from residential A to residential, I mean, to commercial C-A, this is what it anticipates, other than, we haven't got to contract zoning yet, but in residential, I mean, excuse me, in C-A district, the C-A district is principally for commercial establishments to which the public requires frequent and direct access. I mean, you're talking about a lot of traffic in, in the C-A, that's what Mr. Dangla had granted. Now, we get to the contract zoning. Well, first of all, let me ask this. When we speak of contract zoning, this is how I read it, the process by which the property owner, Mr. Daniel, not you folks, you're the owners now, but the process by which the property owner, in consideration of the rezoning of his property, agrees to the imposition of certain limitations. The contract requires more than one person, requires two people or an entity and a person. Here, it was the city, and here it's Mr. Daniel. What was presented with this contract was specific to me, to Mr. Dangla and the city, not to you folks. So, I'm trying to figure out why we're arguing about the imposition of not being able to take buildings down or whatever. That was for Mr. Dangla. Are we to sit here and believe that this church is supposed to abide by the conditions that the church is to continue with the, with the beauty salon, with the spa? That's what Dangla was contracting to do. I mean, that, that's how I look at it. There's got to be, after reading the case that you presented, believe me, if this matter goes beyond this, with the issues that were raised in the letter about whose burden going forward, what is the burden of proof going forward? Is the definition of burdensome, is it a factual matter or is it a legal matter? We're talking about a very lengthy process and a very expensive process, and if we can't come together as citizens of, of this city, I've been here 70 years, go my 76, and I, I, this leaves a little bit of a sour taste in my, in my mouth, and it shouldn't. There's so much room here for, for compromise. I went over today, took some photographs, I hope no one minded, and when I looked at the buildings, I mean, the most intrusive building is the garage, that's in someone's backyard. But they agreed, the city agreed, that Dangla could take it down. So, I mean, that's what, that's the contradiction that I have, as I sit here and look at all of this council. So, I wish it was, I wish it was kind of a court proceeding, we could say, let's take a recess and get into chambers and try to settle this case, because it's certainly can be settled. My solution would be maybe the garage in the big building, the two-unit, that's something that can be discussed. So, I, those are mostly all my notes, and I hope I didn't take up too much time here, folks, but I wanted to put some perspective on what I think is before them.
Thank you. Somebody else, I don't know, the board? Scott?
I am on the Comprehensive Planning Committee. We're in the process of, of updating the plan, and I looked through the chapter 13, and, and it had material, like you read, you know, where we're supposed to, it's important for the city to grow, to have adequate support for cultural institutions. But the other area that is in that section of the plan, and which the city has been expending many resources, i- is housing. And so, that was the initial concern I had, was housing aspects. There were apartments on the site for the old zoning, and if we rezone it in those apartments, I was afraid they might go away. And so, we've got a strategic plan, you know, comprehensive about both of these, you know? Important to support our cultural institutions, but housing in that particular vocation, which is so convenient to downtown, is important as well. So, that, that was where I was hoping we could come up with some kind of plan that would perhaps save the housing.
What I could offer to that, if I may, I don't know how many units could be in there, I would think, Mr. Dangla asked for a two-unit to become a three-unit. So, let's say the most that we could have there would be five units. Close to downtown, on the corner of Temple and Front Street, we have a potential developer that's looking to put in 40 to 50 or 60 units. So, someone to say, will you trade five for 60, I mean, that's a pretty good deal for the city, let alone what the Hathaway Building is doing, many, many units down there. So, I, I just want everybody to take a look at everything. I mean, I haven't missed, that's not lost on me, sir, about, about housing. I, I definitely agree with you. I, I'm an owner of 35 units here in this city, so I know how important it is and the demand that people have, but if I take a look at comprehensively what's going on in the city now, I guess I would take the 70 or 80 units coming in and the five that may be lost, because we've got a church that appears to be growing. The need isn't for a big building, it's for larger space for the parishioners to come in and to worship. That's, that's, that's how I, might I see it at this point.
If I could just briefly respond to Rebeil's remarks, I think there's, there's two important things to be mindful of. So, I understand, first, the, the proposed comprehensive plan is just that, proposed. It's not the comprehensive plan that is, that's currently in effect, rather, the 2014 comprehensive plan is, is that that's in effect and that governs the determination that's, that's presented here today. Regardless, obviously, the, the proposed plan is a reflection of, of the ideals and the direction of where, where the city is heading. So, we appreciate the fact that that's, that is part of the consideration. And to that end, it's important to emphasize that limiting the way that First Church can utilize this property, in other words, landowner cannot remove certain buildings, that doesn't create a housing unit. It creates a vacant building that will continue to be a vacant building, because First Church does not have the ability or the capacity to get into renovating a building, essentially becoming a landlord and maintaining those units. You can't. What, what's going to happen is if, if the order is that First Church cannot maintain, cannot remove those blighted buildings and otherwise utilize this property, they're just going to become vacant buildings and stay that way.
May I respond?
Yep.
So, I'm not very good at this, bear with me, but it seems like it behooves us to try to protect housing, we're reasonable, and we have the potential for establishing a precedent here, and that precedent would be that someone could come in and buy a piece of property and know that, that the current zoning prohibited it from what it wanted to do, but then could seek to get the zoning changed. And your rationale now is you, you want to change the zoning because you can't use that, those buildings the way they were originally intended. But what's preventing other folks from doing that in other situations? I'm not trying to be argumentative, I'm just, y'all, didn't y'all know the zoning was set this way when you bought the property?
Importantly, no one could have reasonably foreseen that the interpretation of the city would be that removing existing buildings was a violation of the contract zone. And that's what was determined by the city council this past year, that removing those buildings constituted a zoning violation. We're required to keep those buildings up unless the zoning is changed back to residential, what it, what it used to be, what all the neighbors are, simply so we have the discretion to utilize the range of residential uses that, that the city of Waterville has recognized to be a risk.
I believe what is a conflict is turning it into a parking lot, right? That's not included in that zone. So, it's not that, we're not even, we're just saying you can't have a parking lot there, well, we're not saying that, but that's what the interpretation would be in that instance, correct? Am I wrong in, in that?
Yeah, I believe that's why Dan didn't issue a federal permit, right?
If I can just clarify some of the procedural history that, that led to us here, there was a, a request for a demolition permit of the buildings, which was then received by the city and converted without First Church's request to be converted to a requested contract zone amendment. And then, it was, it was heard on that basis that the demolition constituted a contract zone amendment, and it was then denied on that basis.
But it says here, I'm, I'm reading, it says, "Five Park Street shall be used only as a beauty salon, spa, professional office of residence. Three Park Street shall continue to be used as two residential apartments." And, and so, I mean, that was the only ration, I mean, that was the way that the city had to act, right? Because this is very explicit, so you had to go in and ask for a zoning change.
I, I, I disagree with you, I, with that interpretation that it's explicit. This is why...
I've got three weeks' experience on the planning board.
And I, again, I also, I don't intend to be argumentative, but I, I think this is, this is much less than clear as with regard to the notion that the obligation will be to maintain existing structures. I mean, I'm not aware of any ordinance in the city of Waterville that would, that that standard would apply anywhere else, with the exception of potentially historic, historic buildings are often, are...
We do have a property maintenance ordinance.
Yeah, we do.
Is, is there any way that we could take the advice of my colleague and, and come up with some kind of compromise that would, I mean, I don't know much about your ministry, so do you have any kind of need for, for apartment for your, to support your ministry or, or some other ministry? You know, that's what I meant by just maybe finding a compromise that would...
Well, before we get into a compromise, if I may, my friend, what was the argument in favor of tearing down a, a single unit on the corner of North Street and Pleasant Street for a parking space for Whirlbottle? What was the logic in taking down Mr. Joseph's building on Middle Street to augment the parking lot?
Those didn't come before the planning.
What's that?
Those weren't...
Well, it was done by somebody.
But they weren't in front of the planning board, so, so didn't, I can't tell you like that.
If it doesn't involve a zoning change... Right, if it doesn't involve a zoning change, we don't hear it. So, we're not deter, we're just determining whether or not the parking lot fits within the contract.
And my, my, my point is, is that we're talking about removing housing. I didn't come before the planning board, but we're talking about preserving housing, and here we didn't preserve these two houses.
But, but again, we, we have no control over that, right?
We don't have control over that, the planning.
We don't, we don't have oversight over that. We have oversight over this, and what we're told is if there's a, if we're making a zoning change, our recommendation, or if we're recommending a zoning change, it needs to align to the comprehensive plan.
Okay, but if we're making a zoning change from C-A back to R-D, okay, why are we talking about keeping the houses? Dangla had to keep the houses, that was the contract with the city and Billy Dangla. The contract wasn't with this, with, with the church.
Well, if the contract is applied to the priority...
Does it nullify the contract between Billy when they purchase the property?
Well, I mean, it's, it's impossible against the party that contracted with the city, because if you take a look at the definition of impose, impose is to force or inflict something on someone else. This isn't somebody else, the someone else was Billy Dangla. That's, that's my problem.
But when Billy Dangla didn't ever even purchase the building, did he, Anne? I think he did.
Oh, did he? He just didn't move his business.
Yeah, again, I mean, the, the zoning ordinance is applied to a, a piece of property, a specific piece of property, not a specific person.
Well, let me ask you this, and I, I don't mean to be argumentative, but under contract zoning, it says, "The process by which the property owner," that's Dangla, that's when this was passed, he was the owner. In consideration, in order to have a contract, there's got to be consideration. Consideration means he gave up some things which were asked of him, those were imposed against him, those are being implemented against him. Now, the church comes in and you're saying, well, you're standing in the shoes of Mr. Dangla, and I'm saying, he never entered into that contract with the city.
But the zones...
I mean, those are the issues, I think that if, if, if this then goes someplace other than this building, someone's going to...
Okay, well, respectfully, we're not here to argue the legal issues, that is, quite frankly, for the city council to argue, and that was my advice from Bill D., was not for us to get into that, we are supposed to look at the comprehensive plan and make a recommendation to the city council on whether or not we want to rezone, we recommend rezoning the property, so that is what we're here to discuss.
I appreciate it.
The legal implications is for the city council to weigh any, their decision, and Bill will advise them appropriately, and that is not for us to decide, and we don't have Bill Lee here to advise us. So, we are to look at whether or not the contract zone should be reverted back and make a recommendation to the city council, and they vote on the zoning change. So, maybe it'd be great to hear from the parishioners and then the members of the community.
Well, with that, I, I'll just stand aside.
Is that a little corking? Are you about to...
What's that?
Can you hear them? Oh, okay.
Yeah, and unfortunately, I have vocal cord damage, so my voice does go in and out, but I'll do my best. So, my name is Sarah Pecow, I, many of you know me. I, many of you know me because I'm the Waterville High School secretary, but I also attend First Church, I've been going there for about four years. On July 28th, I was standing on the sidewalk, and there was my voice. I was standing on the sidewalk, waiting to walk to my vehicle that was parked at the Hannaford corporate office, because as you know, we can't park at the church, when a vehicle struck me and ran me over and dragged me down the street. I have since suffered many injuries, wasn't able to go to church at all for a while, and now able to go, but as was Elmont, my family has to pull into the little laundromat parking lot, they have to unload me, there's a line of us that all have to have assisted devices to get inside, and we have to be unloaded there, then make our way into the building while our family members go elsewhere to park the vehicles and come back to us. And that's difficult enough as it is, but thinking of winter coming, you know, again, I've gone there three years and I've always made it, but the sidewalks are tricky and that kind of stuff, we have a lot of elderly folks. So for those reasons, I personally would like to push that the board really consider approving this parking lot so that we can have accessibility to the building regardless of our abilities to move. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Sarah.
Thank you.
Just for the record, I'm glad to see you.
Thank you so much.
We were worried about you.
Thank you.
Raphael, do you want to? I'm also glad to see you here.
Thank you so much.
I passed that street twice, three times every day, opened the door, and I know, I was terribly, terribly shaken when that happened. I want to go back to the zoning regulations. The church bought the property knowing that there were these restrictions on it, and I think it's a moot point to attach them to the hair salon because they were tacitly re-zoned when Mr. Mitchell bought the property. So the zone, if you read the details, it is sufficiently flexible to allow for what Mr. Mitchell planned to do with the buildings, so there was no need to change the zoning for that. And he was very open about what he wanted to do with them. He came in front of the planning board meeting on 17th August 2020. I'm sure he put five minutes. The minister was there, there has not been a change in management, as Mr. Montalone said last time, the same minister was there. So the church must have known that there were these restrictions on it, and they were openly discussed at the meeting, maybe even handed out. And the fact that the church asked for demolition permission before bringing this to the planning board or to the city indicates to me that they planned to ignore or circumvent these zoning restrictions and thereby infringe on the rights of the Whirlbotters, who have to be heard when there is a zoning change. There's also another argument that two houses on the property were inhabitable, they were inhabited actually until around the time of the sale. Mr. Mitchell apparently made them uninhabitable, but he would never have done so had he not known that they would be used for, or they would be torn down and used as a parking lot. Nobody forced the church to buy a property with restrictions that contradict what it wants to do with them, and nobody forced the city to hold on to those properties. So the neighbors have indicated that they are willing to consider a compromise, and we are still waiting.
Any questions from the board?
Does anyone know what the compromise is? That's been proposed?
Raphael, do you, do you guys have some sense of what type of compromise to be willing?
We are very keen on making it possible for the church to have a handicap access that works better for them than the existing one, and we indicated that we would not be proposed. We would not like it, but we would not be opposed to the tearing down of the smaller building. I believe that's not a three Park Street in the back, and that would give the church access to the church community building right in time to make the church
I just thought, no, for, actually Jeff, I think. You can probably stay there since I was curious, I used to be on a historic, oh, what's the preservation committee, so my schedule had a conflict, but I was curious, how will you go about making an entrance in a historic building like First Church?
Sure, the sanctuary part is actually the part that's on National Bridge, or the historic places. The buildings that are on the back, because that used to be two buildings that were put together and inherited to the back of the church.
Okay.
Those buildings are not historic.
Okay, alright.
So when we tap into the back end of those, so we can have handicap access right from our parking lot, that does not breach that standard.
So I don't know if this is in the, within the purview, but this is one thing that I think about. My ex-husband's office is on Park Street, and I have spent many, many years pulling in and out of that driveway there, and thinking about Sarah's situation and how congested that intersection is already. I mean, like, yeah, anyway, I won't go down that, I won't go on a tangent there, but what I would be concerned about, and this, I think, would apply to the comprehensive plan in the sense that, you know, try to be mindful of this type of stuff in the old plan and in the new plan, is creating more congestion that would create more of a dangerous situation for even newer parishioners. That's my biggest concern, so if I were on city council, for example, I would really want to know how you would prevent contributing to the congestion in that area. By adding that much parking, it would, yeah.
Yeah. If we have parking on site and pedestrians would not have to cross the street, that resolves some of the issues that would have been up there. So, the parking is, if we don't have our own parking, we park on the street, she parked in the Hannaford office down the street, we park in the concourse, we park beside the library. All of the parking that we don't have on site, you know, we're going to gain parking spaces, not enough for all 200 others.
Right, right.
But, yeah, the only thing you could do to reduce the amount of congestion there would be decrease the amount of people that are coming to our church.
Do you think that, from your expert point of view, do you think that that would alleviate congestion or create more congestion? In my mind
If we had fewer people, there would be less congestion.
But you'll still have the same amount of people, but you're adding more cars to that parking lot, right?
If you're in that
Instead of dispersing the parking over a lot of space, we're now concentrating it, and you're adding more cars to a place that is already very congested. So that's, that would be my, that would be my big question.
I believe the biggest problem is the intersection, because people have to stop there. It's a four-way intersection, so there's not the opportunity for leaving other than going through there. From the parking lot, you can come out of the church parking lot, turn right, and go into the city that way. Other people who park by Hannaford, by the library, by the concourse, have to come through that intersection if they're coming to the west side of town. I think it's probably moot, but I think having more, or the opportunity for more parking on site would decrease the amount of traffic that's going through that intersection.
Thank you.
In my opinion.
May I ask quickly, do you have a plan in place for the parking?
No, we presented two plans and we cuckooed on both of them, so we have nothing to argue.
Presented to us or?
No, like
To the city council. Usually I present
Right.
But this is presenting to the city council, and I haven't done that before, so
Yeah. Yeah, so it seems also strange for us to be trying to make recommendations or give any feedback when we haven't been presented with those plans, which I think is sort of where I, where I feel like a little confused. I would add that I think some of these issues with crossing the street, and I frequent, like, I live in the neighborhood, right by Jeff, so I walk that frequently when I go downtown because it's easier to walk downtown sometimes than parking. So I know how awful that intersection can be, and this is sort of outside of the purview of the planning board, but Sarah, I hope that you'll go to the council and share that as well, because I do think that the city should be looking at, we should be able to walk safely in our downtown. And people should be able to cross the street from the library to the church, and I think that's why we put some of that parking in the library for shared access, right? And spent a lot of money on that very nice little traffic calming area. And so I think that that is something that should be, because I don't know how many parking spaces would be able to be added if the zoning gets changed, but it's not going to solve the problem, and the downtown parking, the downtown congestion, we need to be able to move safely in our downtown. So I hope that you'll bring that up to them as well, because that's a major concern, I think. And you do bring up great points, Jeff, about mobile, move happy down there, so thank you for bringing that up.
Just one of the my kids went to the hall school when they walked. And at the hall school, they had someone that would help the kids get across the street. And I've seen that for other types of events. Would that possibly mitigate some of the danger if there was a you have regular services and you have regular knowledge of the traffic in and out of your facility? Perhaps we could have as a way, you know, near term, while we figure all this out, have someone, a crossing guard or something like that. Maybe the city could help do that. Have you asked to see if that could be a possibility?
I think everybody, it seems like a crossing guard would be helpful, but it doesn't address really the core function of what this redesign is focused on, which is trying to accommodate vehicles that are dropped, that are trying to drop people off close to the ramp. Right now, that's happening on Elm Street. I think that's the most spot that doesn't require a ramp. That's, you know, unfortunately, a crossing guard can't facilitate that transfer of the sale of people from Elm Street to the ramp.
Can I just circle back to Sam's comment a minute ago? I think some of the biggest trouble here is that we're, you're trying to present a plan but not giving us a plan for what it is that's happening. So I think there's a lot of things that are being said and talked about, and it's, you know, we're just yo-yoing this in 12 different directions at this point, but if we had a plan that was solid in front of us to show what it is that you're trying to accomplish and how you're looking to accomplish it, it might give us a little bit more to actually go on to say this actually makes sense.
Right, I'd like to piggyback on that quickly. Maybe the solution here is not necessarily reverting back the RA zone, but restructuring the terms of your current contract zone. So to help you achieve the goal that you want, but also, one of the, one of the issues with achieving a zone is when a property gets resold, right? That new buyer could
That was actually my point, as I said, instead of looking at something that was negotiated with Mr. Dangler, let's contract with this gentleman with the same zone.
Right, it's my, right, it's my understanding that when you buy a property that's zoned a specific way, you absorb that zone, but like, perhaps the solution here is asking for like new terms of a new contract zone. So we're not just, right, we're reverting back. We can go forward, I'm not saying we can go forward, but perhaps we can go forward to find something that gets you what you want, but also takes into consideration the increased traffic or the increase in and out on Park Street. I really do think that like, once you have, you know, all the cars parked, we continue to park on the road too. And then what, we don't want, you know, we have neighbors here who are concerned about the extra, so perhaps there is a solution, like you said, that involves a renegotiation of the contract zone terms. That's what I would, I would
Are you folks amenable to just simply carrying down the smaller building and the garage?
I think that as you heard, there is a plan that's set, and what we've asked for is simply return to the same zone that everyone, that all the neighbors are in, and be subject to all the same standard conditions that all the neighbors are subject to and abide by those. And if that doesn't, if those standard fare restrictions impose limitations of how many square feet is available for parking, then we're certainly, we accept that we're subject to that. In this regard, First Church is not being asked to have some special exception. It's asking to simply go back into the more restrictive of the options that surround it. And so, and that's why, that's why there isn't a plan presented to you today, because the existing district provides all sorts of specific restrictions on what can and can be there. We're inviting you to take us to the most restricted one.
I understand, but I do understand that, but, and going back to what these two were talking about, we do need to, and I think Jeff has seen this happen more than once, we cannot yeah, I think that we cannot, like, we can't make that specific call. I wasn't here when it was rezoned, I'm only here now when we're asking to move it back. I don't think moving it back necessarily to RA is the best choice for that.
They're asking for it to be RD.
RD, I'm sorry, RD. But yeah, I would, yeah, does somebody want to maybe make a
So I could certainly get behind that. I guess I would ask, would you be amenable to something that you're not asking for? You guys are asking for, we want it to be RD. Is that the only thing that you're going to accept? Or is there room for compromise where, and I don't even know if we can somehow do this, but to say, we can change the contract zone to be reworded to be in a way that, you know, any change to the site plan would require approval by the planning board? Is that an acceptable compromise?
Without, without more opportunity to actually consult with my colleagues, understand that? I can't speak to that statement. What I can speak today is that we have presented a petition
Here we go.
For rezoning and are asking for action on that, on that petition. Please don't hear that statement to say that we're not, First Church is not interested in engaging, but
Do you want to see if this can be a little two-minute conversation? Or
Well, I would
Should we?
I was very impressed last week with the plan that they came up with, the solar farm. I could look at it and see where the roads are.
Yeah.
I have no idea where, I don't even know where you're proposing to put the address for the folks that need help. I mean, I don't understand where the roads are. It wouldn't be that hard to put together a plan for what you want to do.
And if our request is approved, the code enforcement officer will scrutinize that to a T before any permit is issued.
Sir, if, I'm trying to figure out why there's an objection to going back to what it was. I mean, it was changed because Dangler wanted to have a beauty salon. He doesn't want a beauty salon.
When did you buy?
Now it's going back to RD. I mean, now it's going back to residential. So let me ask, if it goes back to RD, what is it that, what is it that you want to do in that district? Will you be comfortable with whatever that zone says you can or cannot do?
Absolutely, that's what we're, that's what we're asking for, not for special exceptions, to be subject to what all our neighbors are subject to in RD.
So in the existing contract zone, there are screening requirements and stuff like that for the property of butters?
In RD?
No, in the contract
Yeah, but
Good.
Go ahead.
If it gets reverted to RD If it gets reverted to RD, those don't exist. There's no screening requirements because the expectation is that it's not going to be a parking lot, that it's going to be a residential parcel, right?
Understood.
So.
I think that's the struggle. My, my problem is that I, I, what I think what's happening, and all due respect, is that if it goes back to RD, I think there's some thinking that there's, uh, there may be some wiggle room for these guys to, to, to end up with what they want. And I, and I, I think if, if, I'm trying to figure out what the objection is for going back to RD and holding him to every restriction in that RD zone.
Because you have property abuders that now have a, a change in what their expectation was for their abutting property.
When they purchased their property.
But it, it, I mean, I, I, are you looking down the, you're putting the cart before the horse. He wants to go back to RD. And then if he comes before this board and says, look, this is what I want to do, then we can, then we can make those arguments.
No, because if they don't, if, if it doesn't trigger approval by the planning board, then they don't have to come here. It's the same reason people weren't able to tear down houses on, uh, tear down his house on North Street. We don't have to improve Terry's House on North Street.
Cause it's the zone already, that zone already exists that allows that to happen. Did you have something to add?
Yeah, I, I don't even know where I was going with this. I am, I'm one of the abuders, Mr. Nell. So when, when, with all due respect, I care about those five units and not the other 50. When you, you mentioned historical character, those homes have historical character. The junk buildings that are being built down on Water Street, those have no historical character. Yes, it's healthy. That, that solves that question. But we live in a neighborhood with character. My wife and I bought the home not to, we knew there was a small parking lot there. We didn't buy that house to be next to a bigger parking lot. I don't know where you live, but I don't think you would want to live next to a, a 50-car parking lot.
And we.
So like, and, and, and I'm just, I'm sorry. It's just the way you're speaking, you're, 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 you're being very callous to, to the neighbors issue here, sir. So, and, and I just want to say, they're making it sound like walking in Waterville is an alien thing, like having to cross the street is an alien thing. People walk the streets all the time. Yeah, look at me, you guys, we have to walk the streets. I live there. I walk, I walked here tonight. Like, we want this to be safe. And I, I, I was horrified that someone got hit, and I, I'm very sorry for you, that someone got hit on our neighborhood because I walked my child across that street. He walks his dog across that street. We, we live in this neighborhood. There, there's people who have to walk and live in this neighborhood more than just once or twice a week. So yes, adding more cars, it seems antithetical to the comprehensive plan, to making a neighborhood livable. More cars don't make a neighborhood livable. More people do, Mr. Nell.
Well, I, as far as being kind of callous, sir, if you felt that, I, I apologize. All I'm doing is I'm, I'm reading the, uh, the ordinance as, as it's written.
I've been sure.
And we have differences of opinion.
You're also.
We have a large parking lot, shoot, you know, we have a large parking lot, all right? And that's going to bring in more cars. But under the CA district that it was changed to, under the CA, it says it's anticipated that the commercial establishment to which the public requires frequent and direct access. So at that time, he was okay that there was going to be frequent traffic into the parking lot? That didn't bother him?
I, I, I bought my house in 2021. That was negotiated before I moved in. And as well, you talk about fair, fair, you know, want to be treated fair. They're trying to skirt the rules. They know what they're doing. They, they want to talk about being fair and, 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 and this would not be acceptable to anyone else. And if you're concerned about, you know, houses being knocked down, as someone mentioned, you know, th- this is exactly the reason why we're here. Because otherwise, people like them create situations where they don't have to come to planning board, and then they just knock down buildings and then they make a neighborhood.
Okay.
Slippable.
Okay. This is getting, I don't want to go back and forth. I do want to say, Tom, that it's not a contract, it's not a commercial A zone. It's a contract zone. And when that contract zone was created, the neighbors did come and there was quite an extensive amount of, um, conversation, wasn't there? And a couple meetings to make compromises and make sure that traffic wouldn't impede on the small dead-end road that is right there and the historic nature of the neighborhood and that the current buildings would be preserved in some sort of way to keep the character of the neighborhood. So those were discussions that were had when that zone was in place, was put into place. So, um, and that was prior to, I think, um, when Bobby bought his house. But we spent a lot of time doing that and that's why it was created as a contract zone and wasn't just rezoned to commercial A, okay?
And I understand that, but let me, who, what is, what is your definition of contract? Who, who did the city contract with?
And can you explain what the contract zone is?
So I think the point is that when we contract zone the property, the contract was placed on the land. And so when there was a new buyer, the contract still ran with the land. That's a problem. Maybe the city should have said it reverts to something or other if, uh, you couldn't even say if it were sold to someone else because Billy Dangler could have sold to another hair salon. So we're, we're stuck with the contract zone because it ran with the land.
But the, the problem I have, again, is this, is that in the contract with Dangler, he had specific reasons as he, why he wanted to have income from those properties. That's why he didn't object for them being in there. These folks had no use for those properties. So that's the issue that I have. They contracted with him and not with these folks. And we differ, I guess, because of.
No, I, I think everyone can agree, yes, this deal was made with Billy Dangler and not with the church. But it is the zoning that is current because the zoning laws really.
And you have an abutter that purchased his home after this became a contract zone. So he went into that contract where he purchased his abutting property after this was rezoned to be within the parameters of the contract zone. So that's the issue. He, he bought his house, he's next door. He bought his house based on the terms of the contract zone. So that is an issue. Um, you.
He bought that house knowing that there was going to be a beauty salon?
No, there were houses, there were people living there, Tom. Like there were five apartments when he, when he.
Can we clarify?
I certainly understand clearly everything. We just have a very different opinion.
Well, that's fine. We can have differing opinions. It's okay.
Anne, may I ask, um, if the zoning were to be amended, will they need to come in front of the planning board prior to any demolition and creation of a parking lot?
If the, no, no.
No.
What triggers the planning board review with the number of square feet of impervious area? And this is existing impervious area. It's not, it wouldn't be new impervious area.
Yes, Scott.
Just thank you for putting that picture up. This is, the, the car is at the top. I guess that is not, that, that end of the building is not accessible for, for a ramp?
No, that isn't ours. That's part of the long.
That's not their property.
This is the longer ramp right at the top of the screen.
Has there been any attempt to try to, to talk with them about sharing them?
Yes, in 2020.
Yeah, recently.
This is the, I don't know about recently, but, um, this is, these are the two buildings here that are on lot, on the same lot, on three, three father. This is the, uh, old funeral home out front and this is the, the two-unit apartment back. Taking down the two-unit apartment is critical because this, you know, the back of the building here is where we plan on putting the handicap access. It doesn't, if we didn't put the handicap access there, we wouldn't be able to, still wouldn't be able to use this space in here because it's not enough to maneuver people around, maneuver cars around. So we wouldn't have parking here for the handicap. So they end up walking from this area all the way back. As it is now, I went up the other night and measured this. This is the closest entrance, closest part, piece of parking we control right here. To get to our ramp, you have to walk down the sidewalk, which kind of does pitches side back and forth a couple times with the driveway going in there. Uh, it's pretty busted up in this section. Walk across the front of the building, up here, and then the ramp is right in the corner of the building. I measured it. It's 325 feet. That's a length of a football field. I think that's, that's not really fair to ask somebody to walk that if they're not able to walk.
Do you have any designated handicap parking then?
No.
No.
But what we, the plan that, uh, Mr. Dangle asked about earlier, uh, which shows our handicap access in this area here and then several spaces right along the face of the building here. It'll be handicapped, et cetera, labeled for, uh, accessible spaces. There would be, I think there's five or six. So the greatest distance they would have is around 35, 50 feet to get into an enclosed structure. Cause it's going to be an enclosure.
And, and the parking area to the top where those three cars are, that's private?
That we, yeah, that's not even, there's a fence in there.
Yeah.
There's a big fence along the backside of the church here.
Do you own that, that driveway that's, yes, okay.
Yes, yeah. This is the driveway to these buildings. There's actually two driveways to that building, if you remember.
And is it their house right at the top that we can see?
That's my thought.
That's your garage?
Yes, yes, right here, right?
Get it.
So Jeff, when you, if, if you are able to bulldoze those buildings and turn it into a parking lot, will you be using the private street as well?
It's, well, right now.
We're not private, but.
Right now, we're required to.
You're required to, yeah.
Because the, this lot is specifically set to be a parking lot. Uh, one of the discussions we had is about putting a fence along here. That street's 22 feet wide. Where do you put snow?
At the end of the street.
What end of the street? There's a home dead in there, right?
No, there's a dead end for snow. That's where the snow goes.
Yeah. Okay. Well, you could talk to public works about that. I think they would, you know, they like to, you know, I don't think you could put a fence along here. So it would, it would be very restrictive.
So you're, so you're saying that somebody suggested putting a fence all along that parking lot? And so where would your entrance and exit be if there were a fence there?
Um, right here.
Right there.
We'd actually have an entrance in here and you'd be able to walk into the door.
So you'd have one way in, one way out.
Yes.
Correct?
But again, this is not, this plan is not really what we're discussing. The real focus that we want to talk about is your recommendation to the planning board. We, I'll, I'll come back with the real plan.
Yeah, except you don't have to, so, right? Right. That's what Anne told us. So how do we know that you'll come back with the plan?
I wish you.
When this was rezoned the last time, one of the major contentious issues was the vegetative buffer and the screening for the abutting property to the north. So if it's not coming back before the planning board, if you do demolish the properties, is there any assurance you can give the abuders? Is there anything that you've given, so there are headlights or?
Well, there's a, there's a fence there now, so that, that's liberates all.
Well, whose fence is it though? Is it your fence, Bobby? So, so it should, the ownership should be on him to provide the, the vegetative buffer that is never.
Well, actually, the, the vegetative buffer that's there now is not really the buffer that.
Right.
In, in the, in the plan.
Right.
Uh, the previous owner didn't completely, but again. I don't want to try to.
So Anne, um, here's another question, um, because I do remember that being a big issue was having that vegetative buffer, which has never been put in. And so there would be no way to enforce that then? Like, would this be considered a commercial property and have, have to put in a buffer?
No, no, they're asking for RD zone.
No, I know, but.
There's no requirement to buffer a, a church parking lot.
Okay.
Of residents.
You know, we just heard a couple weeks ago about a residential neighborhood that was concerned about having a parking lot and car lights shining through and all of those things. And we had extensive conversations about buffers to protect those property owners from, from the cars in the parking lot and making sure that their, the character of their street wasn't in somehow kept intact. So it is a concern to me that like, should we recommend this rezone, this would never come back in front of us in order to make sure that some of those things get put in place so that the neighbors do have some protections on their property from, from vehicles and cars and.
Can I offer just a brief observation? And that is first, this corner that's showing this property is among.
The lefty.
The, the bottom left.
Okay.
Parking lot. That's among the area that the contract zone, as it exists, and it shall now and forever be a parking lot.
Oh, I, I fully understand.
So those concerns will perpetuate regardless.
However.
Also, I'm, I'm sorry to interrupt.
That's okay. I just, what I am saying, I understand, I was here when the contract zone was put into place. So I fully understand that that is always to be a parking lot. People were very sad that a million years ago, the house was torn down, like when we came and talked about it. But a long Bobby's property there, Mr. Dangle's property there in the back, um, is in the contract zone. There's supposed to be a, a buffer. And we had like hours of conversation about putting in this buffer to protect the property from the parking lot. Should it become the spa or whatever it was going to become so that it would not, you know, bother them and the cars and the traffic? And that's never been put in place. So while I understand that that is supposed to be a parking lot, fully, I understand that. Um, my point and what I'm trying to communicate is that, um, we had intended for there to be a buffer to protect the adjacent property owner and that was never put in place. And that is of no fault of the church. I understand that it was previous property owners that didn't end up following through with that. Um, and it hadn't been enforced. But that's a concern of mine because I do think that the neighbors and the neighborhood of this very small, dead-end, very quiet street, I, in a very busy area, but quiet, dead-end street, should be able to give some of those feedback, some of that feedback to protect their own properties, right? And so that's the concern that I am trying to put out there.
Sure, we understand that. Of course, I think there's, there's a mention about, about headlights, that the time, the time of day that's being, that it's being used is a, that's that much lower concern than it would be if this was a Monday through Friday business out of business.
I thought the church does have.
I'm, I'm not saying, I'm not saying it's a non-factor. I think, I think I'm trying to express that it's, it's a lesser factor than you.
Well, I can tell you that the property we were talking about the other day has to close by eight. So in the summer, okay? So and that headlights were a concern. So I'm just, I mean, these are, are valid concerns of people protecting their properties next to a parking lot.
I understand. And, and the other, if I could offer one more, if I could support that size, is that these neighbors in the surrounding properties that are under the residential Ds have the flexibility to make changes to their property and take those up with the code enforcement officer and not seek their neighbor's permission. And what's being, what's, what's been expressed or demanded by my neighbors here is that they, they be, um, have the opportunity to chime in about what a private landowner does with his property. Now, there was input, and input is welcome and is, is willing to, you know, that's, that's a conversation that, that the church's going to have of the expectation that, that First Church be subject to that kind of neighbor's veto, right? Is, is an aspect of.
So I actually don't think that that's fair. I'm sorry, let me just quickly, sure.
So I'm going to say state law affords them that right. And so, and, and I don't want to come off as hostile, but for you to say that they shouldn't have that right when you're beginning the conversation with, we think you're infringing on the church's rights by not doing this, I find that a little hypocritical.
And.
So state law affords them that right. I understand. It requires us to give them that right. I understand, and I, and I agree with that absolutely. And so I, I, if I can just clarify myself. What I'm, what I'm, what I'm trying to express that I, I failed to express effectively is that First Church is asking to be similarly situated with other neighboring property owners, subject to the same, the same restrictions, the same, the same requirements, and, and not singled out with, with height requirements or with lesson requirements for that matter. We're asking to be treated exactly the same. And to the extent that, that the law, whatever ordinance guarantees that, that right of, of neighbors, that's certainly. Yeah, and, and I would say that the city is treating you exactly how they would treat anybody else who has a property that has a contract zone implemented on it or is seeking to have a zoning change. So we're going through the public hearing process, we're hearing from abutters. We're not, we're not treating the church any different. Agreed, and, and again, I want to clarify, I, I am not objecting to, to the comments that have been, been made in any way whatsoever. That, that's not what I'm, what I'm trying to say. I'm, I'm representing, um, the ability to, to personate, as future of the code enforcement officer, not, not talk. And, you know, based on the zoning ordinance, right? You know, I, I think this would be a little bit different, right? If, if that parking lot didn't exist and it was all green space, well, you know, then it wouldn't be able to just become one big parking lot, right? It would, you would have to come through,
Absolutely.
of, of other approvals, right? If, if I wanted to tear down my house and make my entire lot a parking lot, you know, if the store that's across the street bought my property because they wanted to expand their parking lot, they, they couldn't just do that, right? So, uh, it is a very unique situation.
Counsel, if I may. I'm going to toss around some legal issues, and I'm going to just sort of switch track here a little bit. You've got a pretty good sized parking lot, as we have, and I guess your intent is to make it larger for your worshippers. But these folks here, uh, they don't worship in their home, but it's their castle. And I don't think it's just the lighting. Uh, the lighting, uh, probably can be tolerated at some, at some level with fences and scrubs. Uh, and I don't want to make it personal, but if I were living where he is, uh, and I'm trying to enjoy my family, uh, and, uh, I hear a caption, and then I hear one, two, three, four doors closed. So it's four doors times thirty cats times sixty cats. Then you hear conversations, uh, and people staying around. Uh, that's, that's the other part of it that, that, that's the human part of it. And I think the comprehensive plan addresses that also. So when you pull shit together, I mean, I think that's what you have to, that's, that's what has to be talked about. I mean, the legal issue is one thing, but the other part of it is, is the human, the human part of it. And I, I, and I understand your issues, uh, but they're both sides. I mean, there's a legal issue, uh, and then there's, there's your issue. And I, and I, and I clearly understand that. Where I, uh, I don't, I don't, I don't have to bear witness to this, where I, you do. I, I want to make sure that everyone is, is protected. I want to make sure you folks are protected and these folks are protected. And I honestly, regardless of what we do, or regardless of what the council does, or regardless of what the law court does, one of you folks are going to have to live with something that you really don't want. And the better way to do it is to compromise, and at least you guys, you folks have reached some kind of middle ground and you can walk away and say, I didn't get everything, but I, I, I sure Nick know what's going to happen instead of having to wait for some court to come up with some decision. Even what you presented us with, with, with this decision here, uh, it wasn't determinative. It was, still wasn't a ripe issue at the time. Uh, so I don't know what's happening with this case, but, uh, if we can avoid the expense, both sides. And I think it's avoidable, uh, but I don't think you're going to get everything, and I don't think you folks, that's it.
I'd like to just make a motion that we deny this ask with the intent of asking you guys to come back to renegotiate the contract so that we get a compromise for both sides. Does that sound like a reasonable ask?
I mean, I think that's not for us to say. I think that's the, the baddest for the board to say.
I just am asking for your opinion of, do you guys feel like that's a reasonable request? So that we can try to come to a compromise?
Um, as a, as a matter of law, no.
All right.
And for, for the reasons that sent, sent forward in, in the letter that was presented to the city council, as a matter of law, no. Uh, but, but I certainly respect.
Can I speak to that?
May I just ask for a second on the motion, and then we can have a discussion? Is there a second on the motion?
A second motion.
Okay.
All right, so here's the thing. Um, I think that you would have a valid argument, like, I would, I would be more receptive to what you're saying about like, why is this such a big deal, right? You know, you under, you understand precedent, I know you do. Out of every, there's two people in this room who understand it better than anybody else, right? You're one of them. So I don't think the city's interested in setting a precedent. That involves what you're proposing, okay? But I, and I do not believe it's fair personally. As another citizen in this town, I would be really mad if I purchased a piece of property with the zoning specified as, as it is currently, and then the, a butler comes in and says, what difference do we make? Can we go back to the other zone? We really can't, because when he bought his house, it was a contract that he signed, right? So we need to discuss. I don't think that we even really need to discuss what you're asking, but I do think that it is possible to, out of fairness, because we care about everybody in the city. I have a special face in my heart for that church. I'm a big fan of historic buildings, right? I think that there's a way to get you most of what you want and also protect this, these people's right to their privacy, which is what was promised him when he purchased his property. We have had this conversation many times with other people who have a problem with their abutters, but they purchased their property going into that knowing what was going to happen in their butters' zone, right? That's not the instance here. So we are not interested in setting a precedent where we're just willy-nilly, like, you know what? Let us just like forget about that guy, like, let's give you what you want, okay? I'm not interested in that, but I am interested in trying to find some sort of solution that satisfies his very, very simple request and gets you what you want.
I guess the argument, and I agree that in some respects, that it, uh, your, the situation that you folks find yourself in, uh, for the lack of better words, is self-inflicted. And, uh, it's, this, there definitely, I think this, the, of course, resonating with this group here is, we'd like to see a compromise.
Yeah.
And I can say, I, I fully respect the need for the, the handicap accessibility. And, and you explaining that, Jeff, I, I fully do understand the need, and I, I understand why you're, you're proposing to tear down the buildings. I, I truly do, and I don't think the neighbors would want to, I don't want to speak on behalf of them, but I know the last time they were here, I heard somebody say, we don't want to disallow handicap parking or grant for accessibility into the church, like that, I don't think that's anybody's intent. But I do want to make sure that we have some ability to preserve this neighborhood in some way, whether it be buffers or some sort of, the traffic calming measures, especially if we're going out onto park place at any point. Um, and it, it really concerns me that if we are to recommend this be a zone to, to residential D, that would never come before the planning board, and the neighbors would never have an opportunity to voice any concerns about cars going out onto park place or buffers up to their property. Because if it were a business, it, they would. So if it, if it were literally anything else, other than a church or a home, they would have the opportunity to give that feedback. And they're so, like, we're talking a lot of cars.
Or spa.
Or, no, they did have the opportunity when it was a spa.
Yeah.
And if it were, if you were putting in a spa, he would be able to call Dan Brackstreet tomorrow and say, please enforce the buffer and make sure that they put it in. And I know that, because when where Butler put in the parking lot behind my house, I called and said, they haven't put in the buffer, can you please go down and make sure they put in the buffer? So I think that there could be like a reasonable compromise that does get the church the handicap accessibility.
It's not a surgery.
Yeah, sure.
I'm a pastor of church. Ideally.
Do you mind standing up? I just can't hear you, I'm sorry.
I can.
Sure.
Pretty well, right?
Ideally, what happens here, uh, this duplex sits ten feet from the back of the church. Um, and so in order to have access, here for handicap access, this building can't stay there and have drop-off. It's just not possible to do it. Uh, and even Sarah's life is more important than that building, frankly, usually. But the opportunity here to beautify this, uh, you know, we're a historic building, we're on the National Historic Register. We have spent five hundred thousand dollars or so in the last four years improving this property. Uh, and although apparently people think that what I say can't be relied on, that would be beautiful, trees, gorgeous. Uh, and the whole, the whole thing would be resurfaced with the, you know, riddians. If we can get some trees in down here, we're going to do that. Our goal is, we have an architect, uh, and because this is a historic building, anything that you build here has to reflect the beauty of that building. And the church was founded in eighteen eighteen, uh, but it took a few years to get the full construction finished. So we want to make sure that the back of this, uh, uh, building, even though it's new construction, reflects the colonial, um, uh, features of the rest of the building, as we hired an architect to do that. So this will be beautiful. Uh, there'll be trees, uh, there, there's no way we're going to have, I didn't say something pejorative. There's no way we're going to have something that's not nice there. So our, our goal is to protect, uh, the, the neighbors from, from having their, here too much or seeing too much of that stuff. So anyway, I don't know if that helps, that's just a big idea.
So, Mia?
Yeah.
Um, I love what you're saying, and I think that, um, that is beautiful. I don't think anybody here doesn't believe you, but Jeff has heard me say more than once, we appreciate your sentiment, but if you die tomorrow, the new guy, who comes in, might not be so nice, right? And so, and we have two lawyers, or a lawyer and a judge in this room, who know very well that everything's better when it's in writing. And so I think, and, and it's even better that Jeff is a parishioner at your church. Maybe he'll give you a discount on drawing up a plan.
Your favorite words are pro bono.
Yeah.
No, I appreciate the point, Megan. The only reason that I've kind of injected myself to this, I made it to do it, was I wanted to just give us some sense of what we're trying to do, and you're talking about restructuring the contract zone. And based on what I'm just saying, is that, what, is that in the range of what we're talking about?
Yeah.
Yeah.
It is, yeah. And, and actually, what you just did is essentially what restructuring the contract zone would be. Jeff would put it in, in writing, and we would say, you know, maybe we need more buffer there. How do you feel about it? And then everything bubbling, bubbling. And then you say, all right, great, let's send it to the city council, and they decide.
Yeah, if, if we can establish, uh, uh, handicap access that, that has a beautiful architecture, if we can get cars easy in and out, so people can drop off, we have, we have inner critiques, we have, I mean, everything you can imagine.
I wanted to say that I drive through there or walk through there on many Sundays, almost every single one, and, um,
You haven't stopped it, you haven't stopped it?
I have not stopped it, but I have seen your parishioners walking there, and I have seen it in the winter, and I do know how difficult it is to get over, I've walked over them. I think Bobby would reiterate how difficult those sidewalks can be. So we try, I, I do fully understand and understand the spirit of what you're wanting, but I think, um, being able to have this kind of conversation and have the neighbors see a plan and say, do you think it would be possible just maybe to put up trees right here or something? Would be a very amenable solution that could help everybody get.
The church is entirely open to that.
Perfect.
Our only concern is if we can get people easy in and out of here. Remember, this is, doesn't all end up being parking. It ends up being a drop-off area, so people can get close to the handicap entrances. So the actual increase in parking spaces is negligible, uh, in terms of the actual numbers.
Yeah.
It's negligible, uh, but we more than have to comply with anything that improves the unity of this area and potentially helps the neighbors, more than half.
All right, well, you have, I mean, I was just saying.
Yeah, um, I just wanted to reiterate, like, we as neighbors have come into this conversation from the start last year in good faith. We listened to the needs of what the church presented, and we tried making compromises off that. And I can be another person to come up and scream over here. Since I do it here, and I can hear a little bit, I don't know if they're trying to get parking and a drop-off or what. Right now, as it is, a pickup truck, a full-size pickup truck, the, the minister's truck can fit through here. I see it fit through here right now with both buildings. So a car can squeeze already through the buildings as.
For the record, my Yukon cannot.
Or, or, you, you can't get nothing, nonetheless, trucks, trucks do, do get through there. So to say that with the removal of this, that they're not going to be able to, like.
Okay, I'm sorry, I'm, I have stopped there, that's a conversation for another time. That was addressed the last time they were here, the reason why they needed space, but this is not the time for that.
No, no, I, 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 I'm sorry.
Thank you, I appreciate it, and I understand where you're going with that.
Yeah, just want to say that we, we've been trying to make compromises, and like, we're still looking to make compromises. We haven't been met with an actual compromise.
Yeah, so what?
More, more branches and more bushes aren't compromised.
Did you want to say something, David, or?
Well, I hate to be a nudger, yeah, I was going to say, there's a motion.
Oh, okay, yeah, all right, so the motion was, can we get right back with the specific motion?
Do you want to repeat your motion?
Yeah, just that I would like to see us deny the current request with the ask that you please come back to try and restructure, I feel like that, with a plan, so that we can restructure the contract and make this something that can be negotiated between both parties.
So to continue on the discussion then, um, I, I do have a thought, and I don't know if it's feasible, but, and would we be able to amend the contract zone the way it is so that it was worth it? Something to the effect of any change, like any change to the site plan and the flyers plan would work through that?
It's my understanding from the city solicitor that, that if you read the regulations of contract zones, that it's the, uh, church would have to be requesting this change to the contract zone. So he, I believe the city solicitor was saying that,
That's correct.
a revised contract is essentially the same as a new contract. So they would have to ask for it. So what you would have to ask them is, would you please ask for this?
Which is kind of what we're trying to do, is what I'm saying is, What I'm saying is I would like to see is deny the request to go to residential D. Give intent that you guys will come back and request.
An easy way to do this then would be for you guys to withdraw your current request and then submit a new request. So I guess I'll ask, are you willing to do that? Do you mind if we take a a three minute break and allow us to have a.
Absolutely.
We're smashing from the washing.
I'm going to script my list.
And there's a.
Well, I mean, we want to emphasize that first church really welcomes the opportunity to do to engage in a in a broader dialogue with this board and about a a future of this property that reflects everyone's interest. But we also recognize that this this board is not the final decision maker. And there are, there are other other interests and voices to be heard through this process. With that in mind, we'd ask that the planning board take action on the petition that's before it. And if it, if if it win, the opportunity arises. Well, the chance to to come back to you in the future with more specifics.
Okay.
When will this be on the council's agenda then? I could probably get it on to the next council agenda. It would be the Wednesday after election day.
On the day I said I was not going to leave my house.
That's November 6.
That is November 6.
Yeah. Would you be available on November 6? Because either way, it would be.
Yes.
Oh, you're available?
Yes.
So the motion on the floor is to deny the residential D request.
Well, to make the recommendation.
The recommendation, yes.
Um, and I'd just like to add to that that that's based on the goals and policies outlined in the existing comprehensive plan under the demographics, housing and rural economy section. Because we do have to present a memo to city council.
No, not to reject rezoning.
We only have to present a memo of where contracts are.
I think a memo would help instead of just saying.
Well, I will write minutes and you all will have an opportunity. I could write them before the council.
Yeah, it's fine. But no, and it is.
And you all could attend the council meeting if you wish.
Right. But no, because that's really what it is, right? It's it's based on those items in the comprehensive plan. I mean, if if we just stick to the black and white of it. Unfortunately, I I would love to see a compromise, but we're not allowed to make that effort. So for those reasons, you have to make.
So we're going to vote.
Yep. So there is a motion on the floor to recommend denying the residential D zone change. So all those in favor?
I'm I'm sorry, did you not want to include the other language so that the council will know that is your recommendation?
I would like to.
Yeah, I would like to put that.
Okay.
Yeah. I'm just trying to restate.
In, right, in, right. So we're denying it. What? Go ahead.
We're denying, what is the basis for the denial?
In, we're recommending a restructure of the current contract. We're we're would like to deny their request to revert their property back to the R D zone in lieu of restructuring the current contract zone to reflect the needs of the a butter who purchased his property after this was rezoned to a contract zone.
Great.
Okay. So all those in favor of the motion to deny the rezon or recommend it?
And all the other language, right?
Yeah, yes. Sure. And anybody opposed? Okay.
Okay. So that won't tell the council what you're thinking is on removing the buildings. It will tell the council that you're recommending some kind of compromise within the contract zone.
Right.
Yeah, because we're not being asked about removing the buildings. We're just being asked about the changing the code.
I I will see to the meeting. We're not going to promise that.
Well, don't leave your house until the council.
You can, you can obviously be a zoom.
All right, is motion to adjourn. Motion. Second. Thank you for taking my phone.